Okay. Hopefully today will be relatively fast, I believe.
So, Mr. Chair, if it's not going fast, do you mind if I intervene?
No, no problem whatsoever.
Okay.
Other than you tell me to not engage. Melanie, we have the issues.
Yeah. We have two in the North Atlantic annex agreements that was acted on yesterday. And the Edmunds Property Direction. That was...
Okay. Then we have the sheriff vehicle purchase. Is the sheriff or undersheriff able to make it today?
Not to my knowledge. He was in court yesterday. He was called to court, so he was unable to appear. And I told him I needed information about their choice on the taco, if he was unable to attend today, but I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so 10-01, public comment? No public comment at this time. We'll move right along. Budget resolutions.
So, we discussed these yesterday, but I felt like I did a poor job on the very first one, which was public health. And so I want to take a moment to explain that a little bit more clearly. 2017-13C is a correction from a resolution we approved the first part of May. The resolution we did in May increased materials and services by 30,000 and decreased salaries 30,000. And it was due to vaccination purchases. And I thought I had that salary available. Now that we're closer to the fiscal year end, I did not have $30,000 of salaries available. I have 26,000. So what this resolution does is it just reduces that amount of appropriation transfer. So instead of 30,000, it's 26,000. I hope that's more clear. Yesterday I was... didn't have the right things in front of me to explain that.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number 2017-13C in the matter of appropriation transfer.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next one, Anne.
2017-18 is another appropriation transfer. This is for the Special Transportation Fund. Again, more services being provided by our contractors. And we will not have as much capital expenditures due to the software purchase timing. So we're going to decrease capital 15,000 and increase materials and services 15,000.
Apologize, I'm trying to make sure I'm in the right spot. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-18 in the matter of appropriations transfer as presented.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
2017-19 is again appropriation transfer. This is in our Community Development Department. Now that we have an inspector and official on staff, we needed to decrease materials and services and increase our salary category. So this decreases materials and services by 8,000 and increases personnel services 8,000.
Very good. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-19 in the matter of appropriations transfer.
Second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept resolution number 2017-19 as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
2017-20 is in the matter of unanticipated revenue. This is for a very small marine enforcement grant that we have in general fund. It is its own department. But we will be increasing and seeing more revenue to the tune of $700, and also seeing more salaries expense at $700.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-20 in the matter of unanticipated revenue.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution number 2017-20 in the matter of unanticipated revenue. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. One more, Anne, I believe.
2017-21, this is a new solution for us. This is called an inter-fund appropriation transfer. Not only does this move appropriation authority from fund to fund, but a corresponding amount of resources also follows this transfer. So what we had was materials and services authority needed in our county insurance pool due to PERS reconciliation cost. Sometimes these are really unknown to us and they kind of literally can come out of the blue. And it's very difficult, and with quick timing and accuracy, to understand exactly which fund and department that would have come from. And so this fund 201 is kind of a catch-all. We had savings in our county lands department on solar incentive projects that now are under our ownership and not being... Dollars aren't being paid out to anyone else on that. It's all of our revenue. And then we also have savings on this ski hill back project that has been extended and will go into the future of fiscal years. So this resolution decreases materials and services and county lands by 26,000 and increases materials and services in the county insurance pool for those PERS costs by 26,000. And then dollars, like I said, transferred as well.
Um, sorry, we'll go ahead.
Well, actually, and I didn't yesterday, I've got a question about those incentive dollars.
Yeah, that's where we go up both. We didn't change it yesterday.
Historically, we've talked about historically. We had talked about when we first did this that they would go there.
They are going there. They are going there. This was remainder up until a time period that they ran. This is the fiscal year that it cut off. And also because we have dollars that were potentially obligated.
Okay.
Okay. So they are the... I'm not moving... I'm not moving solar incentive revenue. The solar incentive revenue is actually in the road department and the fairgrounds. I'm moving the solar incentive expenses that we could have been held to on the investment of it.
Okay.
But that is since past.
Okay.
I don't need that authority anymore for materials and services, so I can release that materials and services authority to another function.
Oh, got it.
Is that clear?
Yep.
Sorry.
That's clear enough.
Yeah, so this is the expense side of the solar incentive program, not the revenue. It's the expense side.
Copy.
Very good.
Needed to ask.
Thank you for that.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-21 in the matter of an inter-fund appropriation transfer.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept resolution number 2017-21 in the matter of inter-fund appropriation transfer. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Excellent. Your resolution is done.
And we'll keep our fingers crossed. We really watched some AP runs between now and June 30th to make sure that there's no surprises.
And I guess, Anne, if there was something, we would run a special meeting before the end of the year if it became necessary. You don't anticipate anything like that.
But thank you for that option if that... Well, your manager should thank you for that option if that is needed.
Yes, if it comes up. So, budget adoption.
Budget adoption. So yesterday, I had approvals to make several changes to what the Budget Committee had approved in May. And so you should have that here's my list. So I'm just going to briefly kind of go through these real quick. We increased funds... the Community Development Fund. We increased both revenue and expenditures for our electrical inspector position and then contract dollars for other counties. We changed public health. We increased materials and services and increased personnel services due to our contract negotiation with Lake District Hospital. In the Special Transportation Fund, we increased revenue and capital for the payment of the software purchase that we're... that's in progress. We increased revenue and expenditures in that marine enforcement department. Very small grant fund, but it needs a little extra there. We also recategorized expenses in that county insurance pool that I just talked about. It's a PERS expense. It's not materials and services. It is salary costs. So we just changed that, put it in personnel services instead of materials and services. We also increased commissioner materials and services for possible attendance to county college. That was suggested to reduce transfers somewhere to balance general fund to make that expenditure available. When I looked at available transfers, the one that seemed logical and not as impactful in a lot of ways was the vehicle pool. And the reason being is right now that fund is sitting with a significant amount more money than what the anticipated beginning fund balance was for July 1st. Even taking into consideration the purchases that were just approved, it's still going to be okay. What that transfer reduction, what I did there is I decreased the transfer from general fund and increased the revenues in that fund on that beginning fund balance. Did not touch the expenditures at all. Keeps it the same. So next year, if something should occur and that beginning fund balance is lower than we anticipated in vehicle, but they need more dollars because they expend every last penny that they're budgeted for, a transfer can still occur. It's still in that transfer category.
So from our contribution to roads, say, that could be changed?
Yes.
And just for the record, although it probably happened today, I don't think those purchases have been approved yet.
Okay.
So there's going to be some discussion.
Okay. Well, if it doesn't happen, then all the more reason why that transfer reduction made sense. If it does happen, it's still available. It can happen.
So if it doesn't happen, the dollars would come out of its next year's budget, so the dollars in there would just be carried forward. All it would do is just slow down the purchasing. If we don't get information that we're requesting.
Right. But next year, I think, this is off the top of my head, but I bet there's only three vehicles slated to be purchased next year. If that number bumps up, then it will require a resolution. Depending on the amount of vehicles that we purchase next year, it could require a supplemental, depending on how many more we go over what we've already planned for. So, on time notice.
And you covered county college.
Oh, one... so, yeah, one more change. The landfill. Again, after looking at that budget just a little bit more closely, we do understand that we're not going to be operating it for 12 months. We won't have revenues for 12 months. We won't have expenditures for 12 months. But at this point in time, because there are so many unknowns with that, the only thing that makes sense right now is to not set aside dollars for reserve for equipment purchase in the future. So we did a reduction of $25,000 in revenue and then did away with the $25,000 reserve obligation that we would have been telling the public for sure we would have to do. So those are the changes that were approved yesterday. And then your resolution number 2018-03 incorporates those.
Any ideas on that?
So hopefully you have the new one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Melanie got us that.
Okay. So the... and to verify you have the new one, it should be a total $46,169,971.
Yeah, 972... or 971.01.
I know you do. Okay, so resolution 2018-03 does four different things. I think four. So the first thing is it adopts the budget in totality. We know, but the public, unless they look really closely, does not understand that we do not spend $46 million. But that is the total budget dollar that includes reserves in unappropriated fund balances that we cannot spend. But that is the total. The second part of the resolution makes appropriations by department within general fund and by category for other funds other than general fund. That in essence sets the law for the amount of money that each fund and department can spend in that category. So that is our county law and the amount, and that's their limit. That's the most they can spend for that purpose in our county operations. The next thing the resolution does is impose our tax, which is the permanent rate and has been set since 1990.
Are we going to raise that any time soon?
We heard it might be $900.
Yeah, ready, set. Just asking.
The last thing it does is categorize the tax because based on Oregon Assessment Laws, compression that occurs when rates go over...
13%.
Certain amounts for general government versus education. So we categorize if this is a general government.
Yeah, 10%, or 10 government, five percent.
Okay, so the resolution 1804 will do all of those?
1804...
Do we... do we all have?
Let's do them separately.
Okay, that's where I was going. So we have to impose the tax. We have to do that one, correct?
Okay, resolution 1803 does all four of those things in one resolution. So you can just approve the resolution as presented. We do all of those acts.
Mr. Chair, I'd prefer just to do that. I think the record shows all of those different aspects really well. So I'm going to make a motion that in the matter of the 2018-19 budget, we approve resolution number 2018-03 as presented very well.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 2018-03 in the matter of the 2018-19 budget, adopting the budget. Total amount is $46,169,971. Further discussion? I would like to note that we went through the hearing process, through the budget hearings. There was no written or verbal comments brought in at that time. And I'd also like to note our Budget Committee and our Budget Officers doing an exceptional job.
Yep.
All read? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So now we need to...
Which can open the doors July 1st.
Yes, yes, we can.
So we do still need to do resolution 2018-04, establishing policies?
Yes. This is in accordance with GAZP 54, which has been adopted. That's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. I believe this has probably gone on five or six years. What this tries to do is tries to, across the nation, standardize what we call general funds. And if we have something outside of a general fund, this helps tell the public that and helps give authorities on how those dollars are spent. So we commit dollars in the museum, the landfill, the roundup, and the business loan program fund to those specific functions. And the reason those funds are separated out is there's not necessarily legislation that requires any of those. We are not getting funds from the federal government, the state government, or any other program to have those funds. So they are donations or general dollars that are used for those purposes. In accounting rules, they would like to see all of that in general fund. We choose to have them outside of that, and then we commit the balances through this process. Clear as mud?
I believe everyone said so.
Gather back.
You sometimes, Anne, don't realize how much power you have.
Just sign.
I watched match, too. Brought it in, so you can sign it. Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution number 2018-04 in the matter... it's establishing... the reason for this resolution's establishing policies for fund balances.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept resolution number 2018-04, establishing policies for fund balances. Any further discussion? Radar, you have anything to add? I think just nickname. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Okay.
If you have a minute, would you like to hear about the PILT call that I listened to yesterday at?
Yes, yes, please share that.
Okay. Nico, as you gentlemen saw, sent out kind of this mass email about a class action lawsuit that Kane County in Utah was successful in trying. And what it aims to do is hold Congress accountable for their lack of fully funding the PILT payments from 2015, 2016, and 2017. The call basically ran through the process, which is a really easy way for counties to become part of the class action suit. We should see something in the mail next week. There is... it was explained on the phone in conference call. If this class action suit is successful, the legal team petitions the court to get reimbursed from their costs. That comes off of the top of the settlement. And then the remaining funds are distributed across all the counties that participate in the class action suit on a pro-rata basis. So there is no out-of-pocket cost to Lake County to be part of the class action suit. When I look at the dollars that we may be eligible to get back from this case, if it's successful and it funds it fully, it could be in the neighborhood of $55,000 less whatever those legal costs could be. I don't know that they'll get that full amount. They might get something less. So it seems to me it's no risk to us to join the class action suit. If it's successful, we'll see some funding back on PILT. It also does not impact, it was stated clearly, does not impact future PILT funding. I mean, they're not saying, okay, we're going to appropriate this amount, or no, by the way, you have to do this back from the out of it as well. So it seems like a very good option, easy option for us to join this.
So we wouldn't have to officially... do they have a process for us to sign on?
Yeah.
Very simple. Right online, you just basically put in York County and a few contact information things. The letter that we get in the mail should lay that out as well, but I looked at the website. You can go right through the website, so.
So as Anne said, we'll wait to get the letter next week. Make sure we're included. If we're not, we'll make sure we're included. I totally agree. It is absolutely zero risk because whatever that settlement is, they'll take it off the top and distribute it to the county. So it's a nice little bonus.
So we should, as a board, take action to join a class action suit?
We probably should acknowledge the need to do so, whether it's through consensus or a motion to join it, however you want to do it, Mr. Chair. But one thing I don't want forgetting is, you know, I know a lot of the commissioners in Utah, and as part of this, once it's all said and done, I think it'd be appropriate for us to send a letter to the board who initiated this in Kane County, Utah, just to thank them. Because they're doing this for everybody.
So anytime you enter into the class action suit, I think we have to take that pretty serious. So I think it probably should be a motion and a second.
Well, we should have... okay. However you want to handle that. If we want to wait for the document, the deadline to join is in September.
Yeah, I think we ought to just... I think we have to do it right now.
Okay.
So it's just... and I never read through all that, so thank you for the update. And I know what sort of what the PILT things you and Dan think are. Is there any need for our legal counsel to be questioned about us joining the class action suit? Or our city county?
I'll make the motion contingent upon legal counsel and city county agreeing that it's an okay thing to be done. So that's the motion.
Okay. So I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to sign up for the class action lawsuit pertaining to PILT payment.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 So since Anne brought that up, and we were clearly given some good direction last Friday on the conference call, not going into any discussions. But I think because we've been working on this so long, I think it's appropriate, and Anne's going to be here. And I know a lot with your support, Commissioner Omer's going forward, that Secure World Schools, I just want to make a small statement, not anything about the money or the program. But at some point in time, I think we're going to see a solution finally to Secure World Schools. The conference call we had was very uplifting. The folks in Senator Wyden's office, both here in Oregon and in DC, that were on the call, who know this stuff inside now, has spent a great deal of time on coming up with a doable, permanent, mandatory spending. Very fair process. So counties going forward will not only have known payments, but they'll have the ability to have increasing payments over time. So just wanted to share that. I don't have to, Anne, if you want to say anything additional about it. We aren't going to talk about it because they've asked us, you know, to not talk about how that's going to happen, but that will come out later.
No, it just... it's everything we've been asking for as far as stability. We want to know, because we want to know and we want to count on it. We want to be able to do the work we need to do for our citizens where you own a lot of land. And so I think it finally gets to that solution where we're not banging on their doors every year. And so they have time to do what they're doing on some other issues. So I'm hoping, and it just seems like the timing's right. The timing's right that this maybe will work.
Well, Anne, when you say other solutions, one of the solutions that's been directly tied to that, that's been one of the encumbrances because of counties' insistence upon making sure that we... not we, but as counties that refer to those payments in the past that suck, that basically supplanted revenue sharing off of timber sales, that we call it, we call it welfare payments, which we never have and never will. But more importantly, it also got in the way of doing the work that needed to be done that we think is important and not more important than even the money, which is the forest health, the public land health and restoration work. So it's going to give them a breath of fresh air. And I think they really appreciate our support. And I think they're looking forward to our support going forward for that being a separate silo that they can tackle with great guns because it won't have this issue of money attached to it.
Very good.
All right. Okay.
So, Mr. Knowles.
Hello?
Thanks, Anne.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to jump down to the Garrett Solar pilot. So, thank you, Dave, for coming in.
Absolutely.
All been wanting to hear what you have to say in your critique of the firing agreement.
So, when I inherited where I'm at, I inherited several pilots that were already in place with very little contact information. And with the nature of the beast of the solar farm is that a group will come in and they'll purchase land, get all the things necessary to make it work, buy the panels, put it together, and then as soon as it's operating, it's sold to an investment group. And that's just the nature of the majority of the solar farms. And pilot needs to transfer to that. And so we've had discussions in the past about trying to improve each, talk about what that looks like. And in that particular pilot, it says it is transferable. And I had written up a pilot order that talked about more of the steps. And we need to be notified at the susser's office from the person selling to who the person purchasing is. And the person... the purchaser needs to notify us of their intent and the handoff date. And I need the contact information for the new people to move forward. And they've provided me all this information for this pilot. And it's not written in that, but I have the support material with it alongside. So yesterday Todd Gregory was in for you folks, and he came down to me and we discussed that. And I said, well, I will not push you to completely rewrite this pilot and start over and chase signatures again. I said, well, except this, have Exhibit A, have the description of it, and so on. And so we had a good discussion about how... And so we, we had a good discussion about how going forward, we will be doing business with the city and with these other, these other things included. But the pilot, and I talked to Jim Bailey about it on two different occasions in the last two weeks, and he's on board with that, so I recommend that we go forward with that. This is a, there's a lot of pilot stuff in the wind, and there's lots of SIPs and other things going on, but we need to look at each individual project upon its own merit. And this one's a good solid one, and it's a good solid $7,000 pilot, and it will be a good money generator for the tax increases. And the size is nice and so on. The approval's all done to the land side. But from, as far as assessment goes of who we're working with, I've been working with the landowner, I've been working with the obsidian, and I have a very comfortable feeling of where we're at, and I have all the information I need to do my job.
All right. Well, just a quick comment. Todd very clearly heard us say yesterday, we're not taking action today until you clear this with Mr. Knowles. And he did follow up with me afterward, saying that he understood what you were saying and, and did follow up, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and Todd actually spent over an hour with me, and we cleared the error. It was actually a very, the best conversation I ever had with him. He's always been distant, he's always been guarded in the past. We just talked, we just put some cards on the table, and I said, from my perspective, this is what needs to occur. And I said, I want to guard the hen house. And I said, we, I feel like we've had the box guarding the hen house in the past. And I said, we're wanting to have another set of eyes on this. And I told him about us, we're transferring the files from Commissioner's assistance to our office, and, and keeping a better history on each and every pilot and so on. Let's get more rest of it, because as he's, when we first started, our county was one of the first ones to get going, and it was a new thing, and we were getting along. But it's a, it's a good way to do business, and it's good for the community if it's right. I, I'm now on the negotiating side, and we'll have further discussions about the SIP and valuations and that kind of stuff later, and when the time is appropriate.
Well, without going into it, then it's not germane to the Garrett, but I appreciate the fact that you had a candid discussion, because we're dealing with this one right now, but related to the one you're talking about, we had more than a candid discussion. It was.
He didn't?
Well, it was pointed, yeah.
Robert Motley from the Department of Revenue called me last night, because I reached out to him also, and he'd sent a letter, an email to me regarding valuations of it and his interpretation. And last night, he finally said, well, the magnitude of his appraisal opinions are very limited, because the largest project they've ever done is less than 50 megawatt. And he does agree in the last five years that the panel costs and the construction costs have been dropping like a rock on these projects, and they're becoming more efficient and very more streamlined from where we were by years ago to now. This project that we're talking about in the future is two years out from now, and they've already given quotes and bids on the panels. I've seen them, I just looked at them yesterday, and they're significantly less. Rob finally got, I mean, reached out to him, because he's my evaluation O2 guy, because they're centrally assessed, and he, he called me back yesterday, and he said, yeah, I need to lighten up on my appraisal and, and give it more grace, because he said there is a potential of them.
You know, technology, Dave, and economy of scale, I understand that too. What we have before us, not this, but what we have before us relative to, not a comparison, but something close to the highest the state's ever done, is one that they're, they're sending this information on currently, that they want to get started sooner than later now, the airport project. And that, that was negotiated at $7,000 a megawatt hour. It's the biggest one, the 45 megawatts. But I'm not suggesting that, you know, there'll be a time and place for the discussion on the 400 megawatt one. I'm more concerned, quite frankly, just for the record, and that's what I told him. Do not, first and foremost, you put the cart in front of the horse by the negotiation tactic she used in the north end of the county. And do not pit us against them, because we are weak. And I said, I do not appreciate that.
And I spoke to him about that, and said, that was poor planning on your part.
Yeah.
I said, that was inappropriate of my position on, on that. I said, the commissioner, and us as an assessor's office, and our, and the way we do business, we're going to go ahead and evaluate and tax it as, as appropriate. What they do on the sideline is what they do on the sideline.
Well, when you, when you, when you do what was done, we're boxed in a corner, because they referenced the pie. There's only this much pie, and we've given away a big chunk of it. We've already obligated a big chunk of it, so this is what's left. If you want more, we're going to take from where we obligated it, which pits us against, so I'll stop there.
Sorry. Oh, sorry.
You just keep the meeting going officially. It's been fascinating. I remember your comment.
Yeah, I know you did.
Okay, on this PILT, this one here.
From the Garrett part?
Whenever it was presented to us yesterday, when this first started, all these PILTS and everything, there are 20 years, this one's down to 15. And by the, the fox that's in the hen house is telling us that under normal taxation after 15 years.
It'll bypass, it'll achieve a good rate of assessment. And that's, and again, that's, that's presuming that, that status quo, and they're projecting it what it is to be. It's just like our Outback Solar in Northlake, which is totally centrally assessed. That started out at 21,500,000. The very next year, it dropped to 11,700. Called them up, and I said, this is significant change. He said, well, we got that data, and we reevaluated it, and then they revalued it. And now, we're, the next year had a slight drop, and last year dropped to 6,700,000. And if it continues centrally assessed, that's, the pilot will work favorable within less than. See, it took a three-year exemption, and it's been fixed.
Right now, it's still under the central assessment or how?
It's under central assessment, correct.
Yeah, and it's paying more than the pilot as of right now. We looked at those numbers.
But at the rate that they've been devaluing it since its construction, in two years, the pilot will be appealing.
So when, we would have so many years at the higher taxation, there have, it's hard for us to know what that offset is. And whenever centrally assessed, there's that form that comes in, is you have the value of the panels and everything are down here, but then they bring in the revenue side of it to do the centrally assessed. So I'm still skeptical, I have been the whole time, because of, it's exactly what you said, we're being driven by the person who's spending the money in their pocket. They're telling us this is the best thing for us, whenever their main objective is what's the best thing for them. So whenever they come in with 20 years, because that's the best thing for us, they say, and then the next one that comes in and says 15 years is the best thing for us, I don't believe them, straight up. But if you tell me, if you tell me that that was the case.
15 years is not the best for us. Because it's going to, the scale's coming down. Now, the way that one pinched about, and I looked at the math of that one, and, and they're in business to make money, and that's what they're going to do. So that's going to give us a, a solid income stream for 15 years at that rate. And I went through the coverage on the original pilot, and it's up to 20 years. So there's, I talked to other assessors, there's people out there with 10-year pilots, because they weren't real sure they wanted to go full plan. And so there's, that kind of varies back and forth. And it's not a perfect world, and we don't know, there's no, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. Essentially assessing, looking at the Department of Revenue, there are shortfalls, budget cutting, they're, they're changing of personnel, there are reduction in staff in our department. It went from 125 down to less than 80 now. The people reviewing these things are brand new, and we're, we're seeing skewed things. We're, it's frankly, centrally assessed, but it's, I don't, I have as much faith as I probably should, because of this economic weather that we're in right now, and what they're doing to their, their staffing. But it's just like the Ruby pipeline just dropped a million, too. And so they're looking at an income stream, they're looking at production, and it's more than just a cost constructed tax. So there are a lot of moving parts out there.
There is, and so I will always be skeptical, but if you as, you say this one at a 15-year, I, I will go with.
The, the Garrett project is a good project, and I'm very comfortable for a rap, and I'm going to be.
That's what I needed, you know? You're, you're the expert in the facts.
So.
Yeah. You are?
The, yeah. The SIP thing's a little completely different, and we'll talk about that later, Dave. The Garrett project is still on the list.
As Commissioner Winters alluded to, I did check, and I just launched it. We'll, we'll get on with approving this.
So would you entertain a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the payment load tax agreement on the Garrett Solar project as presented.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the pilot payment load tax agreement with Garrett Solar Project. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys. At the end of the day, just, like I said, these solar projects are taking unutilized land and making it very favorable for the taxing districts that they're in. And I was looking back at the difference between Adele and Plush are the school districts. And we, we sent, and we direct deposited last year $220,000 in Adele. We put less than $40,000 in Plush. But the way their formula is, the higher they get on local taxation, the less they get from their state grants.
Right.
It's still better to get from the county, and they still make more money than they would off the grant, but it's, it's an odd thing the way they do this.
Yeah, that's small school formula.
If a second pipeline was to come in to the Ruby project, alongside the original pipeline, Adele would no longer get any state, uh, grant funding, it would all be on local taxation.
Which is a nice thing, because sometimes we talk about these things in terms of, you know, speaking fairly, we want it both ways. You know, we talk about our tax dollars that go to these different, well, in schools, this case of the schools, but at the same time, our schools are being supplemented someplace else in the state. So we can't have it really both ways unless we generate a tax benefit.
We've benefited from that program, state grant funding for a long time.
Yep.
And we're starting to see a little bit of growth, a little bit of tax increase, and, and people are getting nervous, oh, we're going to lose that money, and we'll be sending money from Lake County to the rest of the state. Well, the truth of the matter, it's been flowing the other way hard for a long time. And there's several school districts in this county, and it's only affecting one. And it's a small one to move. And so at the end of the day, it's not all that.
All righty. Very good. Thanks, Dave. Have fun.
Next item is MLU Climate County Juvenile Detention. Jake came before us yesterday. This is a standard agreement that we have done for many years, so we entertain a motion.
Excuse me. I'll make that motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement between Climate County and Lake County. That's just a continuation of our longstanding agreement.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Lake County and Climate County for the juvenile beds. Any further discussion? Uh, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So I know we're a little late into the meeting, but, Mr. Bailey? I just realized he's not here.
Um, Mr. Bailey isn't available today.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I probably knew that, but.
I don't know if I, I couldn't.
So Dog Lake Forest Service Agreement. This was brought before yesterday in the work session, been looked at and re-adjourned between the Forest Service and our road official, and the legal counsel had reviewed it, so they entertain a motion on it also.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Dog Lake Forest Service Agreement. It's a co-op agreement between the US Department of Ag, Forest Service, and the Lake County Road Department for the paving of the Dog Lake section and the slump areas they refer to it on the Forest Service.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the road project agreement between Lake County and the USDA Forest Service, Fremont, in the National Forest, not to exceed $90,000 if I remember correctly. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dump Trailer Purchase.
This dump trailer's going to be utilized up in Fort Rock and Silver Lake area to collect the refuge that will be transferred to the Christmas Valley Transfer Site. Total cost is, Kevin received three bids, and all of the cost was $7,161, and I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion's been seconded, and I'll second motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve that Cbar C Truck Sales Incorporated purchased a Big Tex trailer, I believe it's Big Tex. I see Big Tex on the, oh, clarify that, yeah, Big Tex, towed in $7,261. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next is landfill, we have a potential landfill extension. After this, it will no longer be potential.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the landfill extension contract between Lake County and Mitchell Brown Engineering as presented.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Dividend to Soloways Disposal Contract written. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have ODOT Agreement Number 32859. That Melanie was?
This is an agreement for grant funds in the amount of $62,811 for the purchase of a small bus category.
All right, I'm looking for how the motion should go, or maybe you're looking for how the motion should go.
I'm just going to simply say.
Agreement number?
A move that we approve ODOT Agreement Number 32859 in the amount of $62,811 for the new bus that Melanie will be purchasing.
I'll second motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve ODOT Agreement Number 32859. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item we have is Sheriff Vehicle Purchase. We had some questions on the purchase, the potential purchase. We have what has been recommended by the bid process is Chevy Silverado at $37,789 nineteen, or 2019, and a 2019 Chevy Tahoe at $44,359. That's without being outfitted, there was loads of quotes. Two questions I had is, well, probably three questions, who are changing from Fords to Chevys? Is this efficiencies have gone from one to the other and everything? But this is going to impact on the summer efficiencies. One of my questions, the need for a different type of vehicle, one from a pickup to a Tahoe, at an extra cost of $7,000. Those questions Melanie has asked of the Sheriff's Department have not been answered, to my knowledge.
So, Mr. Chair, I can make a motion if you're okay with it, that we approve these two purchases contingent upon, cause I'm okay with it, you, you've been on the vehicle for many, I know that you've been on the vehicle for forever. And there's legitimate questions we had yesterday relative to why do we need that over this, you know, the conventional, that can't be answered right now. And the contingent part of the motion would be to purchase the pickup, to approve the full purchase of the pickup, the Silverado. And the Tahoe's contingent upon the undersheriff sitting down with you and Melanie and explaining why the difference, why there's a need for the difference, that if you're satisfied, I'm satisfied at that time. Well, that's one way for us to do it. Are we going to approve the, I don't know, but in that bid process, if you have to purchase both of them at the same time in order to get the prices that were given, if, if those prices stand independent of each other, or if we carry it forward?
I would assume that you know what that does.
Yep.
I would assume we could purchase them individually. I can tell you that the vehicle committee did say they would support his choice between Ford and Silverado, or Ford and Chevy. And Chevy was less expensive than the Ford by $3,000. But I, I think we could individually.
And, and the Chevy Ford part, while I think it's a legitimate just question because they are changing from that type of fleet, uh, I'm more concerned with the, the notion, I mean, what, what goes into thinking we need a Tahoe that costs $7,000 more just because we think we need it? So.
Well, I, just for the record, Commissioner Kestner's not here, but he, he was concerned about this also yesterday. He was the one that brought up, he's a liaison to that department. So I, I guess we can go forward, it's the end of the year and we need to get these done. We have the quotes out there. The vehicle committee does support, um, either Chevy or Ford based on that all of the work can be done here locally on any of the, what do you call it?
Warranty.
Warranty work, sorry. Yes, so, yes, we do support that as a vehicle committee. I guess moving forward, moving forward with this, I'd like to, an explanation from that department of what do they see as the most efficient way for that department to operate on efficiency for vehicles? Because vehicle cost just continues to rise. We're talking, this is just the base vehicle. And if it's going to be $30,000 or somewhere around that, or $20,000 to outfit this, we're almost, that's, we're talking $70,000, $75,000 running up and down the road every day. Just in the vehicle alone. What are the efficiencies? What is the taxpayers expecting out of us and efficiencies on the vehicles? So I guess that's sort of my question to them is, is this the most efficient way for you to operate that department?
Well, and Commissioner, you bring up good points and I don't know if it came up in the discussion, but I could almost hear, I don't want to presume anything, they have to speak for themselves, but when you take these extended cab, whether it's a short loan box, the short box pickups that can carry people who have been arrested, we'll say, and, and do it so safely, then sometimes we get, well, we have cargo we need to store inside. I think a camper shell is cheaper than a Tahoe. So, you know, I don't know if that's the right, I mean, I'm just guessing at as to what, you know, and then you, basically, I believe you take away some of the ability and, and it's, I'm not a deputy and I'm not a sheriff, so I don't know. But I think you take away some of the ability to do some of the work you do in that particular deputy in that rig because you don't want to see it booming down across the countryside. You know, you've got a, you've got a family SUV that you're driving out there. I know it's not that though.
But what you're getting through, what you've presented to us for years is we need the pickups because we spend as much time on gravel roads and off-road as we do on the highway.
Exactly. And so now out of the blue, we get this request and we don't have any, you know, I know they're busy and we're tied up, but it, as you alluded, it's the end of the year, we kind of haven't done. And yet we have questions that we'd just like to have answered, not that we're not positioned, we just would like to answer. I think they're doing their due diligence, we'll do that.
That's fair enough. So, um, I, I guess I would, if you want to make the motion, I would much rather leave it with their liaison.
And you, and you made that point, that's a good point.
Their liaison, he's the one that processes that, work with the liaison on the efficiencies and why they need these vehicles contingent upon the liaison giving the thumbs up on you.
So if the liaison gets back to Melanie in this process, Melanie contacts the liaison and says, you know, that's what was decided specifically because he really wanted to know why the cost difference, that we've approved in contingent upon him having that meeting with them and you, I think you need to be there so you can hear what that is. And that they can, they can go forward if he says, yeah, it's, that's legitimate, that's not legitimate, but that's, that's understandable.
So.
So that's the motion.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve both vehicles contingent upon the liaison and Melanie and the undersheriff slash or sheriff, uh, working on the need and explaining the need to have different type of vehicle than what we have been. Any further discuss, did that capture your emotion? Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have minutes of June 5th and June 6th.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of June 5th and June 6th as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We do have executive session today under evaluation of employees slash department head. So I would like to recess this in four hours and come back in January of 2020.
Yep. I think that's appropriate.
No, we'll take a short recess to make sure our HR is available. You have some other things going on today. If you have told me that there is, that he wouldn't make it, I said it'd probably be around 11:00. So, um, we'll recess at one minute till 11:00, come back at 11:15. Does that work for everybody? I know you're wanting to get out of here.
No, no, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. So we'll come back.
I appreciate the speed, Commissioner, which you ran the evening. I apologize for dragging the pedal. I will never say that to you this week.